Find is where there's one, at least one child 18 years or younger, and an adult in the household worked during the prior year. And if you see among all households with children, the poverty rate was 3.4% in 2013, that's our latest data, if there was at least one full-time year-round worker. But it was over eight times that poverty rate in households where an adult worked, but nobody held a full-time year-round job. And look at African-American households. Poverty rates about 7% among families with at least one full-time year-round worker, which is, I have to say, just ridiculous by itself. But it is 43.5% poverty rate in African-American households where somebody worked, but nobody worked a full-time year-round job. So legislation that encourages employers to offer additional hours to employees is important to family economic security and increasingly we see that it's very important to families of color. Unpredictable fluctuating hours, I want to say, are not boutique problems. They are quite widespread in the economy. And we have a report that, you know, that is out there that you can see the national data on this. But basically, over 40% of hourly workers in their 20s, 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s know when they'll need to work one week or less in advance. We have, some of these data only come from what we call early-career workers between 26 and 32 years old, so people who are forging families and, you know, forming their, you know, they're forming families and forging careers. That was it right now. And we see highly fluctuating hours that are widespread. And people often say, well, it could be that fluctuations of hours are because that's flexibility, that you're deciding to work different times or you don't know when you're going to work more than a week in advance because you haven't decided yet. Well, that might be true for some of us, but not for the majority of workers and not for the majority of hourly workers. 50% of hourly workers say that their employer sets their schedule without their input at all. Only 16% say that they determine their start and end times freely or within guidelines set by their employer. So for the majority of workers, so-called flexibility is employer-driven flexibility, not employee-driven flexibility. And, you know, and there's lots of research to support that. Although the practices are widespread, some occupations are at high risk of unpredictable fluctuating hours over which workers have little control. And I am just struck by my list in comparison to the other lists before where workers are, do not also have access to paid leave. Look at food service workers. 90% of them said that their weekly hours had varied in the last month. 64% reported that they only know their work schedule one week or less in advance. 39% said that their employer completely controls when they start and begin work. Same is true of retail workers. And when we policy scholars see such widespread prevalence and such devastating consequences for American families like you, we think, here's a role for public policy. So is it feasible to ask employers to provide more stable, predictable, and adequate hours? Or is there just too much volatility in demand? Well, there is increasing evidence suggesting that it is indeed possible to have them improve schedules, that there is in fact more stability and predictability in labor demand than commonly believed. And this data, evidence comes from randomized experiments. It comes from data from business professors who do operations research. And it also, I think, I would like to add as a data point right now, it comes from employers who are taking leadership in this area. Starbucks, Victoria's Secret, the Gap have all pledged to get rid of on-call shifts to post schedules two weeks in advance. And if you read the paper, you can see there are some glitches in them doing that, but they've all committed to saying that that is possible and that they're going to work to those ends. So this, some businesses are telling us it is possible. What we see from our randomized experiments is that it is possible as well. This is a graph of results from a randomized experiment that we did with a national women's apparel retail store. And we randomly assigned stores to one of two conditions. One, we asked them to post schedules for a full month at a time. The others, we said, please continue with what you usually do, which was posting schedules just a few days before the work week. And as you can see, May and June were the baseline months. They were completely identical. We asked them to post ahead of time and whoop, they did. And most of them liked it. Only three out of 49 managers who we selected to do an end-of-follow-up survey with said that they would like to go back to posting only a week at a time. The majority said that two weeks was absolutely no problem whatsoever, but that they would like to have the firm change things so that they could easily post three weeks out. One of the takeaways from that study, in addition to seeing that managers could do this, is that demand was not as unstable or unpredictable as we had thought. We picked retail because we saw it as the poster child for volatility and demand. But as we got into the study and we had hard data on how many hours are actually used, what we began to see is that there was a lot more stability day-to-day, week-to-week, and it was almost completely predictable. So just to give you some stats on that, what we looked at for these stores was, you know, if you take the busiest week of the year, think of the week in a retail store that would include Black Friday, the slowest week in the year, think of the third week of January after everybody's returned their tacky sweaters. Returns are done, everything's done. The difference for 50% of the stores from that peak and, you know, valley was 25% difference or less. 25% saw variations, 15% or less. So that was the most extreme case. And when we started to look from week to week and from month to month, the variations were very tiny. So week to week, from one week to the next, over 90% of the hours used one week were the same hours used the next week. And the company provided forecasts of what you're likely to use four weeks out. And those forecasts were over 90% correct. They could have used those forecasts and been very close to what they felt that they ended up needing at the end. But most managers did not see that stability and predictability in their labor requirements. And so they didn't try to pass it on to their, their workers. And this is a chart that I think highlights it nicely. Again, this is from one store, but we have many more graphs like this. And each of the skinny lines there are an individual worker in that store for all of 2012. But the, but the heavier line in the middle is the number of hours used in the store overall. And so, yes, you can see that the number of hours the store used varied across the year. But the individual workers' hours varied a lot more than the hours varied in the store. And so one of the things to think about is how, you know, with, with legislation, we can help, you know, managers see the stability and the predictability that's already there and provide ways to pass that on to workers. And I'm not the only one saying that. There is all this growing research and operations research where they're showing enormous more consistency and predictability, not just in retail, but in many different industries. And I will tell you that scheduling and workforce optimization vendors will brag about how they can predict in any industry, you know, labor demands 16 weeks out, six months out, with over 90% accuracy. And they have the data to back that up. But right now, there's just no incentive for managers to pass the stability and the predictability on to workers or to even try to find it or to try to, you know, create maybe more stability for workers. So some considerations as you develop your ordinance. I think research suggests that there is not going to be a magic bullet, that especially when we're talking about scheduling, it needs to be a package. And I would also like to add that when we think about this, I think one of the, as you look at your, your, your family, you know, ordinance is that you're including paid sick time. I mean, they need to go together. We need to pay attention to work on the job, you know, the hours on the job and the hours off the job if we truly want to support family economic security. And just to provide you an example of why in scheduling we need a package, you know, you can post schedules ahead of time, okay. But if there are no incentives to not make adjustments afterwards, there's just going to be all kinds of adjustments. And workers are not going to get any greater predictability than they did before. And it probably will be even worse than at least if they knew their schedule a few days before the work week because then at least that they would know is likely to be closer to the real schedule. You know, and if there aren't incentives for all kinds of changes, if they're only focused on decreasing, you know, reducing hours, which is particularly problematic, of course, you know, managers are just going to do these bare-bones schedules. And then they're going to add hours all over the place. So again, you know, it's not going to deliver greater predictability or stability to workers. And workers are just going to be competing with each other for those hours, especially in the context of overhiring. So another point is that business is saying that labor flexibility is really important to their profitability. And I think we should take them at their word. But if that's the case, then they should be willing to help share in the cost. Because right now, the cost of that instability and unpredictability is put on the shoulders of workers to bear. And there are real costs for workers for unpredictability and instability. You know, for parents, you know, we see parents, they have to set up just-in-case childcare, just in case I work Tuesday instead of Thursday. I've got to work evening instead of a day. Often they have to, you know, call and arrange more childcare when their manager asks them to extend their shift. Then there's other kinds of costs. People will miss their buses, they miss their ride, they have to take a taxi home from work, that's very costly. People take out payday loans because they thought they'd have enough to pay their bills, but they don't because they don't, they didn't get as many hours as they thought they were going to have. And then, of course, there's opportunity costs. It makes it very difficult for workers to hold a second job or to take classes when you don't know when you're going to work. So work-hour standards can provide incentives, I think, for employers to pass the stability and predictability that's already in their business on to employees. Another consideration as you go forward that I have found in kind of being a part of different initiatives in different municipalities is to really sort out what is the issue when you're partnering with employers? Is it the documentation or is it actually what they're being asked to do? And I think a good example of that is sorting out, you know, the issue of a provision to say that you have to offer hours to existing employees before hiring new employees. Why, I tell you, to me, that seems like a no-brainer. Employers complain about turnover costs. That's the cost of posting the job, interviewing workers, hiring them, and training them. Other workers take on those hours? You don't, you get rid of those turnover costs. But I do think employers are genuinely concerned over how they will be able to document that they offered it to their workforce. Those are two different issues. And, you know, and it's important when you work with employers to sort out what is the issue. Some are fixable and some are not so fixable. The other suggestion I make is to phase in the law. These practices have been around a long time. And systems support them, you know. And so there's, there's a lot of change. We know this from our randomized experiments. You try to change one thing, there's a lot of other things that have to change to make it possible. And so if you decide to go for that 28-day advance notice, you might consider starting with 14 days. In big companies, for example, most of them, managers will get their hour allocations for a full month. So about mid-September, you'll get your hours for October. Well, that means you only have two, you only have, when you make your schedule, only two weeks advance notice for the first two weeks of the month. So businesses, many businesses will have to adjust their systems. Seems completely feasible, but that takes a little time. Same thing with employees. Everybody's been trained that everything's last minute. You know the schedule isn't going to go up. You don't have to know ahead of time. You can just ask, you know, the Saturday before for next week because the schedules don't get, you know, made until then. And one of the things that we find, found in our randomized experiment is that it took employees and the managers, it just took them a little time. And all of a sudden, things that didn't seem predictable became predictable. The final consideration is, I just want to say, we don't know as much about forecasting of labor for small enterprises. And by "we," I mean researchers. But workforce optimization vendors say that they can predict labor demands for any business, large and small, in any industry as long as they have some good past data. But I think it does say that, you know, small businesses may need technical support and new tools to do, it's the forecasting part. Scheduling, you can do scheduling with paper and pencil. You can do scheduling on a spreadsheet. It's the forecasting of knowing when to put people in, of finding that stability and predictability that is really what is important to be able to deliver more predictable, stable, and more adequate hours to employees. So I will end with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lambert. I'll just note for my colleagues that we had advertised this as concluding at 11:30. I do know at least a few people will have to leave at 11:30, but a few others have asked if they could have enough time to ask a few questions. So I guess this is in part a question to Dr. Lambert and staff if we would be able to continue a little bit beyond. I will say I would not continue this beyond noon at the very latest. But I want to make sure that if my colleagues have questions, they have an opportunity to ask them.
I'm, it's fine with me.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Lambert, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you can give me some, at least a few examples of where these ideas have been put into place successfully through local governments where it hasn't been a problem?
I cannot.
Because there aren't any, right?
There, well, it depends on what you mean by a problem.
Has there been anywhere, Dr. Lambert, anywhere in the country where a local government has put this kind of scheduling request or ordinance into place for businesses of all sizes? Because I understand in San Francisco, it's been a big box home.
That's right, it's the retail workers, there is not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there any other to that? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Lambert, I appreciate all of your graphs and your, and your points that you've raised in your presentation. Are all of those graphs in the study that you've done, are those all for retail workers? Because I appreciate what you say that in retail, managers, store owners can predict their, their time. They're, they're the ones advertising their own sales. They know the cycle of holidays and such and such. And after you've been in business for a few years, you certainly can predict that. I know that's true in even my small businesses. I happen to know that the week after school goes back is the lowest revenue in any liquor store in the city, for example. Why that is, there's lots to suspect. But have, have you done other? Do you have this kind of analysis for the other occupations at high risk of scheduling practices? Do you have this kind of data for janitors, food service, home care workers?
I was going to say, no, I do not. I have, that, those data come from part of the randomized experiments that we've done. And we've been able then to work with employers to get detailed. But I would encourage you, and I can also offer, you know, find people for you. The, some of the scheduling vendors, like Workplace Systems, which is an international firm, and Kronos, have those kinds of data. And they, and they work with employers in different industries. So part of what I am talking about is informed by their experience working with employers actually implementing forecasting systems and scheduling systems together.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. Minneapolis has some really significant disparities in income based on race. And there also are probably very big gender gaps. I'm curious if you've done any research about the disparate scheduling impacts on people of color and also on women and single parents in particular?
So we have with national data. What we see is that often the racial and gender discrepancies come in through what we call labor market sorting of who goes into what jobs. And when we look at, at jobs where, that are more female-dominated, when we look at jobs where there are, that are low-wage and also have a large percentage of people of color, those are the jobs that have, you know, kind of the constellation of different scheduling practices, you know, that are potentially problematic. I do want to point out, though, that a lot of, you know, the national data show that a lot of what we, traditional male jobs are the ones that have the least predictability, the most fluctuating hours, and are often the ones at risk of overwork rather than too few hours. And so, you know, it crosses, it's, these problems complicate the lives of both men and women. We do see that especially African-Americans and Hispanics are concentrated in some of the lower-paid jobs that are, you know, not of high quality on many different dimensions. And one of those dimensions is on these scheduling practices.
Okay. And I'm also curious if you have examples of some companies in retail, maybe food service was another one that came up, that are, are doing fair scheduling practices successfully? Maybe even a chain, I don't know. But are there examples where it can actually be done?
You know, I would encourage you to talk to, I mean, one of the things that I do in my research is the way that I get my data is I, for the most part, keep the companies completely confidential. The exception to that is right now I am helping conduct a study with Joan Williams at the University of California, Hastings, and we're partnering with the Gap on a, on an intervention. And those findings won't be out until next year, but we are, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're engaged in trying to very much improve the adequacy, the predictability, and the stability of their sales associates' hours. Otherwise, I cannot mention any employers. Well, no, I can mention one other one because we got approval. My, my colleague and I, Anna Haley-Locke, and this is some, this is a company that everybody knows, is Costco. And how they handle their labor variability. So we went into Costco to find out, are they cutting workers' hours? Are they scheduling people at the last minute? And what we found was that in the warehouses that we went into, which are their stores, they're called warehouses, is that every single warehouse we went into in both Washington State and Chicago, yeah, they do, every day. But they do it in a way that is completely different from every other employer I have studied. So the way that they do it, first of all, the key difference here is that Costco guarantees its part-time workers a minimum of 24 hours a week. So you have a base. You can count on that from week to week. Makes it very different when you know you're going to get that to say, okay, you know, I'll be, you know, flexible. They don't have to pay in terms of their hours. And they also pay wages that are, you know, are generous for the industry. And so what most of the warehouses had the system where when people came in and clocked in, people would write their name on a board, I'm willing to go home today. And that board was never empty. And often it was, most of the time, you know, it was the highest-paid workers who'd been there the longest who go home. That is so different from what we see in other workplaces. It is the last hired person, the person with the lowest wage, the person who's already incorporating, you know, all the flexibility. They're the ones who incur all the instability and the risk. But Costco has this foundation, these basic, you know, kind of work-hour and labor protections that make it so that these adjustments and, you know, to demand do not have the same ramifications for their workers. And I have to say, that's kind of how I think of these kinds of legislative initiatives, that we provide, you know, they should be basic standards for a 21st century economy. And you provide those basic standards and then the implications of then having, you know, business having to adjust somewhat the hours, it's not as bad. But, you know, again, they have guaranteed minimum hours. They also make sure that each one of their warehouses has at least 50% full-time workers. And I can tell you that in most retail stores, not, usually 90% are part-time. The managers and maybe the assist, you know, and the assistant managers will be full-time. But almost hardly any firms have full-time, you know, sales associates these days. So I don't know if I answered, you know.
Thank you.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professor, that's really helpful. And it's no wonder then that Costco stock has not seen the challenges that some of the other retailers that are their competitors have seen. And so I wonder how much then is, is the marketplace dictates that, those practices? The other question I had, and it was at the very beginning of your presentation. When you talk about the employer needing this extreme flexibility, when did you see that trend changing? I mean, I'm older than you are. When did we get into this kind of a dynamic that there is? And I'm a nurse, I will tell you that, you know, I saw this happen actually in the healthcare industry where hospitals, you know, made people more adjustable in scheduling so that you'd have to work in a, perhaps a department that wasn't your home department if there were, if the census went down, that kind of thing. When did you see this kind of a change come through the economy? And is it retail that is the worst in that area? Or hospitality or?
Well, food services has some of the most volatile income. And people who work in food services have some of the most volatile, you know, income. Have the most, I would say the most, their highest in terms of often the income volatility. I put the verb in the wrong way. And it's hard to know. I mean, one of the problems is that our national data have not tracked these changes very well. And one of the things is part of our, you know, Julia Henley and my research informs in seeing all this happening. And we would go to the national data sets and say, well, when did this start? And when is it happening? And how widespread it was? And there weren't the items there. And so we worked with the Bureau of Labor Statistics on the NLSY. And now we have those new items. We've just, we're having a new module in the General Social Survey, you know, so we can pick it up from here and see if we get better or worse, but it's, it's, it's hard to judge. What we do know from labor market economics is that what we see beginning in about 1973 is that up until that point, when businesses, you know, kind of made more money, the median income of families grew. And they grew together. We were all in the same ship. And in 1973, those lines began to diverge. And that, you know, and so what's happened to business? They are incredibly profitable. Most of them, I'm not saying all of them. Certainly, there's a special case for small businesses. I really do want to recognize that. But overall, in the economy, we see that business has done quite well. But that American families have been left behind. And this is, I'm sure, not anything new to you all. I mean, people talk about this in terms of the growing income inequality. And when you think about that, you know, one of the lines I use is that income inequality comes from someplace, and one of the places is the workplace. And so what we can do is we can look back and we can see, starting in the late '70s, early '80s, and that's about when I started studying this, that there was a lot of focus on containing costs. But there weren't the same tools that there are now where you can watch it every 15 minutes on your BlackBerry and say, oh, no, 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 right? There's this, and so, and also Wall Street has a lot more power now than it even did back in the '70s or '80s in terms of what it expects, in terms of, you know, in terms of returns. And so the other kind of labor market, I'm sure I'm boring you to death right now, but is the financialization of the economy where a lot of firms are valued not because they make a great product or provide a great service, but because they can be separated apart. And this part can be sold off over here and that part can be sold off over there. And it doesn't matter how well you And it doesn't matter how well you did your job, you've been, you know, kind of made redundant, and you can lose your job regardless of how well your performance is. And so there's been this really growing distance between firm profitability and the fortunes of American families, and also the recognition of what workers add to to the firm.
Thank you.
I can say, though, when I worked at Sears many years ago for five years, we got our schedules the Thursdays before the work week that started on Sunday.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been hearing, as you might expect, a lot from our business community about these proposals, particularly the scheduling piece, which is a new idea. And I wondered if you could talk more about how you arrived or how sort of folks looking at scheduling have arrived at predictability pay as part of a policy solution? And how is this not just penalizing businesses, especially our smaller businesses? We really value our small business community in the city. And so how could we work with with those actors? I've hearing more and more actually from businesses who already do a lot of this, who support the direction that we're going. So how can we kind of take those good examples, work with our smaller businesses to make this work?
So the predictability pay, the way that I think about it is very much like overtime pay. It is a premium to workers for their extra commitment and their flexibility. I don't see it as a penalty to businesses at all. You know, when you have to stay more than 40 hours, it is a hardship on your family, it's a hardship on your life, and, you know, at least at some point, we had those kind of